All right, everybody. It's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting order. I apologize coming in last minute, hot there. Had some stuff to take care of, but glad everything's going good and glad to be here. So, welcome, everybody. Anna Clark, when you're ready for the roll call, please proceed.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Proton Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Thank you very much. And another last minute, I've asked Commissioner Brownlow to lead us in prayer there. So, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Hail my Father, we come to you today in awe of your mercy and grace that you renew fresh for us each and every day. Lord, we just ask for your godly wisdom upon this ward and upon our town, and may we do what's right to glorify you in your name and all we say and pray, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Please stand and face our flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number five would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
It's a move.
Commissioner Sanderson with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. Item number six would be the board's to consider the appointment of an interim town attorney. So, I'll open it up to the board there. I recommend Tim Caraway of Carole Pridgen, PA, as interim town attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried. Thank you. Item number seven, Mr. Zap, you want to help us with the employee recognition or actually financial reporting? I jumped ahead a little bit. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes, sir. I'll do my best to help you on both, actually.
Yes, sir.
We want to go ahead and recognize our finance director, Ms. Laura Rochford, for the Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, of the United States and Canada. This award is for the town's comprehensive annual financial report, often referred to as our CAFR, for the fiscal year that just ended, June 30th of 2023. And I'd like to share that Laura has been with us now long enough to have received this award for 10 years concurrently in a row. So, Laura, thank you. So, thank you, Laura.
Yes, sir. Quite the feat. Can't say enough about it. I won't get started. I'm long-winded, but from A to Z, top to bottom, you do a fantastic job of budget proposals, reporting, everything. I mean, we're very, very lucky to have you, and I'm grateful. Thank you for everything that you do. And that being said, Chief Panzrelli, you want to come up to the podium and help Matt and I with Mr. Ketchum's recognition? I know he's not here. Would you join me?
Yeah. We were just going to say that in his absences, as the mayor comes forward and Mike comes up, that we wanted to definitely recognize David, but he's busy policing and helping us out. So, he's doing his job right. So, we'll let Chief speak to this more.
year. When he joined the Emerald Isle Police Department, he worked his way up through the ranks as a patrol officer to sergeant and now serves as our watch commander.
As our esteemed town manager said, he's out policing. He's out doing what he has been doing for the town of Emerald Isle for the last 20 years. So, he might, I know he'll see and hear it later, but Lieutenant Ketchum, thank you very much. I'd like to read this recognition out loud. The town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to David M. Ketchum in sincere and grateful recognition of your faithful and dedicated service for the town of Emerald Isle Police Department for 20 years. On behalf of the mayor, Board of Commissioners, staff, and citizens of the town of Emerald Isle, this service award is hereby bestowed upon you as a token of our appreciation and esteem, presented this ninth day of July, 2024. Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Ketchum. Coming in hot. All right. Item number eight would be our public announcements. So, we'll have a public announcements video and then our fiscal year 2425 budget videos. Control room, when you are ready.
Welcome to the town of Emerald Isle's public service announcements. Emerald Fest happens every Thursday at Western Ocean Regional Access from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Don't miss this free live music event. The next police educating the public event is July 16th from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. in the town boardroom. On July 16th, the golf cart advisory committee meeting is at 5:30 p.m. in the town boardroom. The next planning board meeting is on July 22nd at 6:00 p.m. in the town boardroom. Come meet your Emerald Isle police officers and share a cup of coffee on July 25th at 9:00 a.m. at the next Coffee with a Cop event. On August 1st, you can start applying for beach driving permits online. Come have a casual conversation with the commissioners at the next Community Conversations on August 5th, starting at 4:30 p.m. This event will be held at the Village Market. The next Neighborhood Watch Meeting will be on August 6th at 4:00 p.m. in the town boardroom. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting is on August 13th, starting at 6:00 p.m. in the town boardroom.
Hi, I'm Matt Zap, Town Manager for the town of Emerald Isle, and I'm excited to share with you our fiscal year 2425 budget. And the highlight is no tax increases. This year, we're focusing on making our town even better. First up are beach access walkways. We're working to replace up to 13 of our beach access points. This is from a FEMA grant, so no local taxes will be used. We're also improving our parks and recreation areas. That means a new gym floor coming later this year. Additional improvements include rehabilitation of our tennis and pickleball courts, as well as bathroom rehabs inside the community center, and a complete rehabilitation of our Blue Herring Bathroom Outdoor Facility. Keeping our town safe is extremely important. We're giving our police and fire departments new equipment and training, and this helps them do their jobs even better. We're also working hard to protect our beautiful beaches and environment. We want to keep Emerald Isle clean and healthy for everyone. And here's the best news, we're doing all of these improvements without raising local taxes. We've planned carefully and budgeted intelligently to make sure Emerald Isle stays affordable. One minor change financially will be an increase in our solid waste fees. Currently, solid waste fees are $295 per year. The proposal for July 1st that was approved by the Board of Commissioners was a minor increase of $5 per year. That equates to approximately 42 cents per month per residential stop. This increase of 42 cents per month will help us purchase a $235,000 replacement knuckle boom truck, so that when you place your yard debris, sticks, and materials at the curb, we can continue to keep them cleaned up and moved to our recycling center without any disruption of service. So, thank you for that adjustment to our fiscal year 2425 budget. For the first six months of 2024, a tremendous amount of work was completed with grant funds. A few of those projects that can be highlighted include the following. New walkway repaired bridges inside of the Emerald Isle Woods location. This project was done with in-house labor, saving the town of Emerald Isle nearly $90,000. Regarding stormwater drainage and roadway improvements, a tremendous amount of work has been completed so far in 2023 and early 2024. Culvert replacements along Archer's Creek included a new culvert at Lee Avenue, Bog Inlet Drive, Cedar Street, and Old Ferry. Subsequently, asphalt replacement and curb and gutter were put in and installed along the majority of these areas. Over the next 12 to 18 months, the community will also see two brand-new fire trucks, two brand-new ambulances, and a series of other equipment that was purchased with federal FEMA 428 grant funds. It's important to note that these safety devices are purchased with grant dollars and not local tax funds. That has helped the town of Emerald Isle save nearly $3 million. We wish to thank our Board of Commissioners, our hard-working staff, and our community partners for all the great things that are happening in the town of Emerald Isle, and together in 2024 and '25, we'll make it even better. Stay connected with us for more updates. Let's make this year amazing.
Thank you all very much for that fantastic job. Item number nine will be our public comments segment of the meeting. If you signed up over on the table on the way in, that's great. If you didn't, don't worry. If I show a hands, we'll get you up there. But when we call your name, please come up to the podium, and you have three minutes to your comments. At the end of three minutes, I'll thank you. I don't have to stop mid-sentence, but I'll ask that you finish your thought and give respect to the time of anybody else who wants to speak. So, Anna Clark, when you're ready to call our first speaker?
Melinda Stallings.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you for the warning about Fred. Here's a little, yeah. It's supposed to be red? Okay. My name's Melinda Stallings. I live at 101 Coquina. We've been coming here family-wise forever. My parents bought property in the '70s, and now my husband and I live here as permanent residents. We come to all the meetings. If we're not here in person, we're watching online. Last month's meeting was embarrassing, and I think you all know how I felt because I sent everybody an email. I heard from three of you in response to my concerns about it. I don't know if anybody else that was here felt the same, but that was just so not professional. That's not the leadership that we elected everyone for, to present to us at meetings and how you handle things. It was just, you know, just embarrassing. That being said, my other concern I have every month, people get up here and they express their concerns. Does anybody follow up with them? I mean, the guy last month, well, actually, there's no minutes posted yet for last month. But the month before, a gentleman got up from Deerhorn, expressed the traffic problem, how fast cars were going. Has anybody called him? I mean, has anybody followed up? There was a lady, I mean, my God, we heard about the pickleball courts and redoing the gym forever. If anybody had just called people and said, "We're working on it. Here's what we're proposing. Here's what we're doing." If they had, those people wouldn't have constantly got up here every month and voiced their, you know, their concerns. There was a lady whose backyard floods every time, and I know you've got the Stormwater Committee, but did anybody follow up and assure her something was being done? Am I saying no? So, if you, you know, all you got to do is call these people. Make a note in the minutes next time that so-and-so was contacted. We're telling them we'll follow up with it. Just reassure the people of Emerald Isle, "You're working for us." You know, anyway, I just, I love this place. Y'all campaigned on being open to the public and our concerns. I don't see, honestly, any point in those quarterly gatherings if you're not going to respond to the people that get, take their time to get up here monthly. So, why should you gather everybody for a quarterly meeting? Just to say you did? But anyway, I just wish there was some way we know y'all follow up with what you, with the people that take their time to come up here and speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lori Ahuna.
Hey, Lori.
Hey. This is the hardest part.
Is this on?
It is. You did it.
I really don't like public speaking. Good evening, and thanks to all of you and the town for your service. I'm Lori Ahuna, 320 Loblawley Street. I'm a full-time resident. I see on tonight's agenda a proposal to give town employees their birthday off with pay. I strongly object to this proposal. The new $13 million budget was just approved one month ago, and the town and the board had six months to work out the compensation package for its employees. Now, please hear me, my objection has nothing to do with the town employees or the job that they do. This is about procedure and the fiduciary trust that we've placed in our board, that you all knew what you were doing when you approved the budget. To approve this change at this time in this manner sets a dangerous precedent. What will you change next month or the month after that? Either the budget workshop means something or it doesn't. Either the budget means something or it doesn't. I believe the appropriate time to bring this up would be in January at the next budget workshop, and so I urge you to do so. So, Commissioner Taylor, I urge you to reconsider and rescind this proposal, and if it comes to a vote, I urge the board to please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Brad Ottland.
Hey, Brad.
How you doing?
Good, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for your service. Brad Ottland from 201 Eagles Nest Drive. And I too am here, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak during the public comment session about what's on the agenda. And of course, as I'm following Lori, I didn't realize I'm here because of item number 15, Employees Birthday and Compensation. And I too will second, and I won't repeat myself and say, hey, two months ago, we had a preliminary budget, a balanced budget with a 3% raise to our public employees. Somebody on the board mentioned, hey, I think the state average is 3.8. So, we tried to have a budget workshop with the department heads here and figure some things out where we could save money, make money, cut the budget, whatever. That didn't work out too well, and we ended up moving it from 3% to 4%. So, how did we cover that? Well, you raised our gym fees by $125, you up to 100, or raised our gym fees. You doubled the class fees for those people taking classes. You raised our golf cart registration. You raised our beach driving by charging seniors. Okay? You raised the fact that if we want to pay with a credit card, it's going to cost us more. You raised the solid waste fee, which we knew about, but the solid waste fee has been going up every year for the past four or five years, in case you want to check back onto that. I know this year it's because of purchasing a truck, but last year it was because of tipping fees, and that didn't affect any of the board members, except Mr. Taylor. He was here when that happened. So, if the balance, if the budget was balanced, where are we getting this extra money for birthdays? We have no fireworks. We have no beach music festival anymore, but we want to pay for birthdays. So, my question is, whose idea was it? How many full-time employees live on Emerald Isle that are going to reap these benefits? How much will this birthday bonus cost us? Because none of that is listed on the agenda, so we don't have any idea with the numbers that you're talking about. So, again, to close, I ask Mr. Taylor, please rescind this proposal, and if we do vote on it, board members, the public's watching. This transparency of being able to see what you're doing, trying to slide it through at a July meeting, just doesn't make sense. It's a little unclear to those of us who live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. Yes, ma'am.
Annette Ruth.
Hello again, Annette.
Hey, everybody. Hey, everybody. Annette Ruth, 315 Loblawley Street. First, like to thank the commissioners. I think you guys are trying to work together and make good decisions for our town so that we can still continue to live here and have a beautiful community. And I like to say "as a community" because many people that come through here, they like Emerald Isle because it is a community and not just a beach town. So, I'm going to be talking on the same subject as Brad and Lori. It's like, where on earth did this come from, this birthday thing? I've worked for state, local, and federal government my entire life, and I've never got my birthday off. I believe this proposal for paid leave for birthdays, which appears to be a random and just completely out of order. I understand that ER wants to hire and maintain employees, but we got to be mindful and realistic with taxpayers' money and the budget that was planned when you all met. Two months ago, the elective officials did not approve the Music Beach Festival due to the fact that the event did not bring in a positive revenue. How are birthdays going to bring in a positive revenue? Where's the money? Where's the cost? You're already getting 12 to 13 vacation days. Adding a birthday will be 14. I don't know any business that gives 14 holidays to any employee. But I know Nice Matters, and, you know, we want to continue that, but Article 7, Section 5 says, "Vacation leave may be used for rest, relaxation, school appointments, medical appointments, and other personal needs." I would believe that personal needs falls under birthdays. We have a wonder, I think Emerald Isle gives their employees a wonderful package. You've got tuition assistance program that reimburses people to go back to school. You have educational leave that allows them to leave to go to class permitted. They're getting between eight to 14 hours of vacation leave per month, depending on how long that you've been an employee. And then you're getting sick leave. You're part of the North Carolina Retirement System. It is a big package budget, and to allow an extra day, that just seems unheard of. It just seems absurd. It just, so I hope that you can come up with some numbers. The public is watching. We do look at the agenda. The numbers don't show with the people here tonight, but people were at home watching. People were at home talking. We are watching you. So, just because the numbers aren't coming out, you know, we're here. So, please do the right thing and continue to make Nice Matters, and that we can have a family beach here in this fine community, and rescind that number 15 that's on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was it.
Anybody missed the sign-up sheet that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Peter Carey from 109 Coquina Drive, and I want to follow up on what Melinda was asking about as far as the follow-up from the commissioners. I'm wondering if, as an idea, just to throw out there, if the following meeting, you could, you could maybe have a list of whoever spoke and have at least give a five-minute follow-up from the commissioners of what those, that person was talking about and what action was said or thought about, or even if you can't do any action. But that would be a great way to follow up from the previous meeting, so people know that you are following up. Even if you can't answer it, at least saying, well, we can't answer that, but this is what we're going to do or think about. So, that's just my, just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Miss anyone else? Yes, sir.
You're taking my senior beach driving privileges from me.
No, sir. No, sir. We miss anyone else? All right. Okay. Item number 10, excuse me, there's some department updates. Up first is Candace Dooley, our Parks and Rec Director. There she is.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. I am thrilled to be before you this evening to give you some fantastic updates for some things that you approved in the last few months and what we've completed. So, if you wouldn't mind bringing up that slideshow for me. So, the resurfacing of our courts is complete. This beautiful aerial image can show you that we now have the resurfacing done along with the painting of two tennis courts and now four pickleball courts. We have four pickleball nets out there currently, and we do have some new nets on order that are regulation size. So, super thrilled with how this turned out, and it has been very popular among our residents and our visitors alike. So, before we start talking about the native plant project, we're going to give you just a little taste of a video that Mark Cruz did for us alongside Commissioner Brownlow and Ms. Peoples, and we're going to give you about 45 seconds of a little taster, and then we'll move into this project.
Hey, everyone. I'm Town of Emerald Isle Commissioner Roy Brownlow. As a lifelong Emerald Isle resident and a coastal management professional of more than 35 years, I'm honored to bring you this announcement. Having grown up with Emerald Isle's natural beauty, my connection to this island runs deep. Today, I'm excited to introduce the Native Plant Initiative for Emerald Isle. This project aims to foster biodiversity, mitigate stormwater and coastal erosion, and create a sustainable coastal habitat. By embracing a native vegetation initiative, we will safeguard our island's ecological integrity, maintain our property values, and help keep the Emerald in Emerald Isle. Join me in nurturing our town's heritage as a unique barrier island community. Together, we preserve what we love about our family beach.
Hi, I'm Carol Peoples.
So, you can find that on our website and all of our social channels as well, and watch the entire video. And if we can bring that slideshow back up for me, if you don't mind. Our Native Plant Project is something that the board approved, and one of my maintenance team members, Ryan Gaster, is going to join me. He has actually volunteered to spearhead this on behalf of our department and is working very closely with Ms. Peoples, and so I will let him speak to this.
Again, I work for Parks and Rec, and I'm a resident here in Emerald Isle also. I just wanted to let you guys know that I really appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to be able to do this. Number one, as a resident and an employee, I think this is a very good opportunity for all of us. I would also like to thank Carol Peoples. I think we all know who she is. She's very much so into this and dedicated a lot of her time, even before this happened, to this island. I would also like to thank Rachel Veal, who works for the North Carolina Aquarium Services. She's also put in a lot of help with us getting this thing together. She works in Manio for the aquarium in Manio, and I just wanted to give a quick thank you to them, also to Candace Dooley for letting, allowing me to do this too. So, if we could pull up that slide. So, this is one of the two kind of, just a real blank look of what we were going to do with four different beds in the right of way. Within this, there's, I know this looks kind of like gibberish a little bit, but these are already existing beds. These are different plants that will flower, bloom between the months of March and November. That is a general kind of timeframe for those. It could go over both of those. So, we're looking at a decent amount of color year-round. Again, this is four beds, and this actually, this one slide right here is a picture of, we've got two different setups, and this is one for bed two and three, and we have a separate one for bed one and four. We're keeping the existing, the large crepe myrtle that's within the bed. Also, for the previous projects that we've done, where we've done our daffodils, our daffodils, if you look real close, there's some D triangles in there, and those are the daffodils that are already in said beds. The idea behind that is that when we, when the daffodils do die back, we've got some other things to come up and bloom around it, so it's not just greenery around that. And so, again, this is, this is something Ms. Peoples did that is very, 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 should be very, very, very appreciated. So, is there, yeah. Again, the four large beds identified for the project, the four beds that we're talking about doing are right across the street from the food line. They're on the south side of 58. There's four existing beds that are already there. We picked that area due to it being so open. Also, So, yeah. Again, the four large beds identified for the project, the four beds that we're talking about doing are right across the street from the food line. They're on the south side of 58. There's four existing beds that are already there. We picked that area due to it being so open. Also, I notice as an employee and as a resident here that a lot of stoppage goes on right there. So we've always got cars in that area, so it's easy to see from a car. It's also easy to see from the second most utilized thing that we have on this island, and that is the bike path. So that's the reason for picking those beds. Surf Rider is another nonprofit that is going to help out with this a little bit with educational signs and some volunteer work that we're very, very, very grateful for. Also like to thank them. And our target installation for this is October 14th through the 18th. We do have a decent amount of work still to do, and this is a very, maybe some things that people might notice that do grow wild in our area, especially, I think people will recognize the mule grass, which is the pink one, the second one over from the left, third one over from the left, sorry, and then the blanket flower back there at the end. We see that kind of pepper throughout the island growing wild. We're looking to kind of landscape that and bring it in more as something that people can, in these beds, they can walk out to really appreciate and get to know this island that we all care about so much. So, all right. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Gaster?
All right, thank you.
Man, thank you for all you guys do. And I encourage everybody up there.
Yes, we very much appreciate all of their work, so thank you for that.
Candace, may I just add, everybody in the room and listening at home, watch the Native Plant video. It was really well done. A lot of research went into it, and all of my neighbors are my favorite neighbors. Carol lives down the end of the street and not one of the smartest plant people I've ever seen in my life. She knows everything by its scientific name and makes me feel a little inferior, but I'm grateful for her, and please do watch the videos. Lot of good stuff in there. All right, go ahead.
Agreed. No, you're good. Thank you. So our new ramp is officially installed inside Emerald Isle Woods. It's been there about six weeks, highly utilized. Very pleased with the construction of this and how it came out, and easy installation. We are working on getting the actual kayak launch. We are still waiting on our KAMA permit to be approved. You have to notify the neighbors, and so all of those letters have not yet been received, so we are working on that. I just don't have an installation date yet at this point. Our bathroom renovations. So I'm thrilled to say we are 99% done with the interior restrooms in the community center. These are just a couple of photos to show. We got all new stalls, new sinks, there are automatic faucets, automatic soap dispensers, and automatic flushing toilets, along with a few other updates. And I have to say, they're starting to look really sharp. Very pleased with the work. And the Blue Heron Restrooms actually started their renovation today, so they should be coming along very soon. The bike path repairs that you approved have also been completed. You can see the two walls here. One was just west of the Dolphin Bridge entrance and one west of the back gate to Lands End. The work turned out really nice, super proud of it. And Public Works has also completed all of the pavement repairs, and they look fantastic as well. Emerald Fest. So this is our summer concert series that we have every year. Unfortunately, the last two have had to be canceled due to illness and then weather. So we really hope that this Thursday, we can host the RV Roadshow, so we encourage everyone to come out and join us for this free event. It's an hour and a half of fun music. Bring your lawn chair, snack, no alcohol, please. But yeah, we've got a great lineup for the rest of the summer, and just cross your fingers that we have better weather and everyone stays healthy so that we can actually host this wonderful event. And last but not least for my presentation is our summer day camp. So not a lot of people know that we actually have this program going on, and so we host 40 children every week of the summer, and Mr. Pearson does a fantastic job organizing different events. We have a different theme every week, and they go to the water parks, they do putt-putt, they're educated by our local weathermen, they go to the aquarium, and you can also see Chief Panzarella there putting a helmet on one of the children. So we do an educational piece for bicycle safety, and then any child who does not have a helmet at home is provided a helmet at no cost. So those are my updates, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Ms. Dooley? Thank you so much. Movie star, Joe Smith, you're up, sir. He's Santa, he's the phone burglar, he's the everything.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here tonight.
Greg, can you roll my slideshow there for me? Thank you. So Monday, we took delivery, well, July 1st, we took delivery of our new brush truck, the Mac Knuckle Boom. Larry was off, so this week it actually is in service, which is a good thing because our other truck unfortunately has a air leak, and we had to carry it to dealership to get that worked on, so I hope to have that back by the end of this week. But Larry's back, he's moving right along, so he should hopefully be able to complete a run around, so just be patient with us for the brush pickup, please. They're getting to it and doing a heck of a job. This, right here is what they do. So in June, we've done 3,400 stops, which results in about 1,200 cubic yards of yard debris that we'll collect and take to the Pelletary Yard Debris Site and store it there. So we do some grinding, which is actually coming, let me go back to that, which is actually coming up the end of July, first week of August. Hopefully, Simmons and Simmons will be there to do some top ground and get that ground, and that's all gonna be stored right there for us to lay down on the yard to help build up the area where we lay our yard debris down and stuff like that. Oops, sorry. Did I go too far?
You broke it.
I did. Thank you, Greg. Got a little happy with the clicker. So we'll move on to the beach. I just wanted to share, because we weren't here for Memorial Day, but for Memorial Day weekend, our guys did a double shift, and it was Friday through Monday, just, you know, for the holiday, we wanted to present, you know, that we removed 7,000 pounds of trash, which is like three tons, and the recycling was almost 6,000, which is 2.9 tons. So we did like a double shift, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and I believe they went out Monday also to, first thing in the morning, we went out, and then later in the day around 2:00, 2:30, they went back out to do another beach run to clean up the trash cans and empty them and check for any leftover beach equipment and stuff like that. So for the month of June, that's, we did 23,000 pounds of trash removed from the beach, 14,000 pounds of recycling removed. We issued 157 equipment warning stickers. Those are for the tents and chairs and umbrellas that are left out overnight and out there in the morning, so we tagged those, and if we come back out the next day and that equipment that has a tag on it's still sitting there, then we'll confiscate it and take it back to the Public Works Building. So this past Fourth of July, same thing, Wednesday through Sunday, they did a double shift. We were up at 6:30, and then I believe they went back out at 2 o'clock to do their second trash run. And as you can see, this is what we just pulled off in those four days, 9,000 pounds, over four and a half tons. The recycling was 7,000 and almost four tons of debris from the beach cans. I'm gonna go back to this, I just, I keep going the wrong way. Anyway, I wanted to say, Greg, can you help me again? I just wanted to say, when I, I went out Friday on the beach with them, and I'm very grateful for the turtle patrol people and the other residents out there to do pick up some loose trash. I know we get a lot of complaints that there's a lot of loose trash, and I don't know if it's happening at night or where it is, but when I went out there Friday to pick up trash with the guys, I went from the pier to the point, and there was one spot that a resident was there picking up. We stopped to help there, and it was actually exploded firework paperwork. But from there, there really wasn't a lot of trash out there on the beach strands. And I'll be honest with you, what we picked out of the dunes was blowing off of the trash cans that were overflowing, even though we did two runs. The residents or the, you know, visitors that are there, they don't, you know, they'll remove the lid, they'll do whatever, leave it there, so then stuff starts blowing around. But I just wanted to put, point that out, that I really think what we're doing is effective and working. I just, I just wanted to point that one out. Also, so on the beach, we assist with the turtle patrol by filling the holes in in the morning. That's why we tag the tents, too, so hopefully the people don't leave them out, so the turtles don't, you know, get blocked from them, and the same thing with the holes. Actually, as of today, we are up to 12 turtle posts that they have out. And we also help assist with some injured or turtles that aren't so lucky to make it. We just did one actually Saturday, while the guys were still cleaning the beach and stuff like that, they called us for an emergency to assist with them in burying one of the beach turtles out near the point. And the reason they bring them to us, from what I understand, is that we're the only ones that hold the permit for that area to do that, so Dale usually calls us to assist with that. But they did that along with taking care of the beach, so they really worked hard this past weekend. And included in that, we've graded the vehicle ramps, each one, we usually go out and check them three times this past month. Some more stuff that we do from the June is, we have a white goods pickup every second of the Friday. You can call Town Hall, get put on the list, and then we'll come by with the Knuckle Boom truck and pick that up. Depending on what the pile is at the shop, we'll then usually load the stuff that is stored at the shop, and then we'll carry that to the recycling center. And that's what we've hauled off for the month of June, is six tons, and that includes the white goods that we pick up. Some of the real estate agencies drop off their stuff for their rental agencies, and the plumbers will drop off hot water tanks and stuff, and then some of it's like the beach equipment that we collect from the beach that are left at the garbage cans. So we load all that up and take it to Foss and carry it to them. And then, just a little note, we have a couple stormwater projects that we worked on. This is one that they're on Fawn Street that the water was building up in the street, so the guys went and built a little spillway to get that water to runoff to the catch basin. That's working out pretty good. We have striped all the crosswalks on the sidewalk side. We've got probably 40% of the ones on the bike path completed that need to be done. They'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks also, trying to finish some of that Another stormwater project we've been working with, we had NC DOT come out to the 58 and 5802 and 5804. Their ditches were blocked up and not really even present, so they came out and redug the ditch, cleaned the culverts out in that area, then we came back out and sotted it, did some stuff to control the runoff and the erosion in that area, because the gentleman, I believe, at 5804 was having some, some stormwater runoff issues going towards his home, so we're hoping that this will stabilize and help collect some of that water before it gets to his, it's a downstairs area. Along with that, we test our storm pumps every month, go through those, we do a facility generators check. For the holiday, the guys went in and wanted to clean up the curbs and get the stuff, all that, and just, we do that with nine full, actually, nine full employees, but eight of them are out there working, and we're lucky enough this year to have three part-time guys to help with the solid waste portion of it, the beach out of it, so that way I don't have two full-time guys coming in on the weekend to, to take care of the beach. So this is, this is really helping us with the part-time seasonal people, so I don't have to have one full guy out there on a, you know, regular basis with the two part-time guys, and it seems to be working out really well. So I appreciate that. Some of the other things we do, we do like work orders for fleet maintenance. We, you know, service 10 of those, from oil changes to seatbelt problems, just stuff like that, lighting issues, building maintenance. We do that, as with air conditioning units, we'll check those, they change the filters, lights, doors. We actually just finished up the fire department with doing some siding this past couple of months and two new old entrance doors. We go out, we did 13 potholes this past month. We made 12 site improvements. They've cleaned and fixed 26 signs, and they are out there doing mowing the right-of-way and stormwater inspections. This was, as Candace said, we helped with, completed the bridges there in Emerald Isle Woods. That turned out really good, and we're really proud of them. They did a good job. The Doe Drive, the Rafima, Carter Craven Electric came out and they took all the overhead power, put it underground, and added a three-phase to one of our stormwater pumps. So everything there was dropped underground, you know, hopefully with the storms and stuff like that, so that was, that's a good one there. So upcoming, as I mentioned, the three stormwater pumps, we're changing from single-phase to three-phase. I actually just completed last, on the second, we just completed the one on Doe. That was a success. We have one more little issue we're gonna take care of. We have the company coming in to storm to jet out the discharge pipe that goes through the pond at Deerhorn, and while we were exercising that pump, which lets out near the Doe Drive access ramp, we actually found that while they were out boring new lines in and stuff like that, they, they went through one of our discharge lines, so hopefully we'll get that opened up this week and see if we can repair that. Second thing is, we are working with Lands End on the dune infiltration system. I believe the next phase, if I'm not mistaken, Matt, is the design now, I think we're getting ready to do. So we're looking forward to that, excited to see what they come up with. And then, I just had an email sent out for the stormwater generator, so the seven fixed stormwater, ground stormwater pumps we have, we will be adding standby generators to those, so if we, in the event of lost power, we can keep those pumps running, which hopefully will keep the streets passable, keep the water down and go from there. Trade an emails back and forth with Plometto Generators, and they're hoping that we might get the generators shipped out here this Saturday. So I'm just waiting to hear back from that, and will we store those down at Fire Station 2 till they come in and start the next phase of getting together. I think that was it.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. [applause]
Board have any questions for Joe?
I'd like to say that I see these guys working all over the place every day when I'm out and about around town, and you guys do a tremendous job keeping our town maintained, looking good, and I had a public workshop for the town when I was 16 years old. It is not an easy job. In fact, I couldn't wait for that summer to be over so I could go back to school. That's unusual to say that, but you guys, it's a hard job, and you do a tremendous job at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
And Joe, I'd also like to add to it, too, that thanks for hiring the talented people you hire, because able to build the bridges and stuff we do, too, that's, you know, having that in-house saves us so much tax money, because that would've came out of our budget, like, everybody talks about the budget all the time, so finding the right people and finding them and hiring them and keeping them is very important, so thank you.
Yes, as you all know, I've been here over 20 years, and everybody that's come through has been wonderful, but I really do think, like you said, Mark, I think we have a very talented team right now. I'm very proud of them. They, they're always willing to go above and beyond and take that extra step, and they are very knowledgeable. So I appreciate that. Thank you for noticing that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, buddy. All right. Item number 11, excuse me, will be our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Yes.
On, on our consent agenda is a minute of the commissioner, Board of Commissioners being on June 11. And I'd like for everyone, if you would, to take a look at page two of those minutes, at the bottom of the page, continuing on to the top of the page, three. There was, these are three minutes are, are to provide an official record of action that council took for public record and perpetuity. council took for public record and perpetuity. If you're reading those minutes, we re-voted on something that had already been voted on at the May 20th workshop. And I'd like to ask that those, that audio be played for, so that we can all hear that again.
Can you tell me what page and where we're on again? I'm sorry, I found my minutes, but...
Page two, at the very bottom of those minutes.
Page two.
And page three, at the very top.
Commissioner Sanderson, what is it you're asking, excuse me, asking for again?
I would like to have the audio, if it's possible. I'm not in that control room right there, because I don't know if it's possible, but I would like to have the audio replayed, because I listened to our meeting on June 11th, when the corrections were made by Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Brownlow. And that wasn't how I remembered it, so I didn't count on my memory. I went back and asked to hear the audio from that May 20th meeting. And I'm asking that that be played for us to listen to again.
Okay. Do we, I, coming in, we have that? Okay.
As the leader of the group today on, that was the request to happen, and I agree, I don't think it's right that we put them on the spot for that kind of question. So I don't see that, that's the way we should do business, to be honest with you. I would, what's the, what would you all like to do the next step? And to hear from everybody else. Alicia, what's your call?
I make a motion that we excuse department heads from this meeting with no further information required.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, department heads, thanks for coming in this morning, and we'll continue our meeting without you. As the leader of the group today on, that was the request to happen, and I agree, I don't think it's right that we put them on the spot for that kind of question. So I don't see that, that's the way we should do business, to be honest with you. I would, what's the...
Can, sorry, can, I had a hard time hearing it. Could you play it one more time, turn it up a little bit, please? I couldn't hear it that good. I'm not sure what I'm listening to.
As the leader of the group today on, that was the request to happen, and I agree, I don't think it's right that we put them on the spot for that kind of question. So I don't see that, that's the way we should do business, to be honest with you. I would, what's the, what would you all like to do the next step? And to hear from everybody else. Alicia, what's your call?
I make a motion that we excuse department heads from this meeting with no further information required.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, department heads, thanks for coming in this morning, and we'll continue our meeting without you. As the leader of the group today on...
Council, may I ask a question? If there is not someone to vote against a motion, then how is that recorded?
If there is, could you repeat the question?
If a council member does not vote against a motion, how is that recorded?
They're either voting for, or against, or they abstain.
Which is a yes.
It's counted as a yes.
Correct. Thank you.
I think that might be a case where Mark filling in for Jason didn't think to ask, are there any objections, or anybody vote no? I think in that case, I was, I was not a yes, but I didn't think to create the opportunity to vote no.
As I was told last meeting, we can stop it at any time.
I hear you. Yeah, and I heard, I heard, it was plain and simple, I heard, I heard the vote was all, I was trying to listen to all the voices two times in a row, and I heard, I heard all...
I clearly heard four.
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like the minutes to be recored, corrected, for the June 11th meeting. I make a motion stating such.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, and help me, help me understand if I'm not hearing it correctly, you're requesting that the minutes be updated, updated to reflect a different vote?
What actually happened on May 20th.
And it was, what was the, per protocol, or per procedure, what was the end result of the vote that needs to be changed?
It was five of, on May 20th.
Okay, so you're asking that the consent agenda be adopted, you're making a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the amendment that the minutes be amended to reflect a five oh vote on that matter?
Yes, I see.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, I just want to make sure I get it right.
Is that referring to the dismissal of the department heads?
Yes, it is. It's what happened by record. Council, am I wrong?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Someone from the audience brought up that it's not what happened. It's what actually happened, and it's our job to preserve that as an official record of the action of this board for public information.
So, nobody may like my response to this, but according to the town of Emerald Isle procedure, which I looked at, the consent agenda and items on the consent agenda may only be removed at the beginning of the meeting upon approval of the minutes of the meeting, which was item five, adoption of the agenda. So by town procedure, I understand the concern, but by town's own procedure, the motion, there should have been a motion for a removal of approval of the minutes from the June 11th meeting off the consent agenda at the beginning of the adoption agenda. So I think, you could make a motion to revise the minutes, that may or may not pass for the record, but procedurally, removing something from the consent agenda should have been done at the adoption of the agenda. So I want to point that out to the board, all members of the board. But I certainly understand, and if there's a statement in the minutes tonight about this issue, whether or not a motion passes, pass a motion to revise it, I think it should be revised. If nothing else, the minutes from this meeting will reflect those comments and concern for the future preservation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, Council, if you'll help once more, where does that leave us on the consent agenda here? It's either to approve or carry the motion or not to adopt the consent agenda? Is that what I'm understanding?
The consent, items on the consent agenda, if they're going to be removed for discussion, when you adopt the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, that is the time to do so by town procedure. So unless that was done earlier in the meeting, at the time the agenda as a whole was adopted, that included matters on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So the motion now is to adopt and approve items on the consent agenda and move on to the next item.
Okay.
Essentially, is where we are procedurally.
Thank you.
But I think the comments will absolutely be recorded in the minutes of this meeting, so that's preserved for town record as well.
Okay, thank you. Does that help?
That does help, and I would like to ask the clerk to please include that verbatim as to what actually happened on May 20th. And I withdraw my motion.
Well, I object to that, because I think we're going on an assumption and not a fact, because I know that I did not vote for the dismissal of the department heads during the May 20th meeting.
You didn't vote against it either, did you?
No, I didn't.
Okay, that's attorney?
It wasn't asked, and fair enough, I should have brought that up for a vote to all those opposed. But then the record should be reflected that there was an abstention, at least on my part. I don't know if Jay voted for or against it. But to state that you heard four voices voting for, I would say is an assumption.
You can listen to it, it's, I'm sure the town will make that available.
If there's a video, I'd like to watch it.
Unfortunately, there wasn't a video, because that's the first thing I wanted.
Okay. All right, the next minutes are going to reflect the conversation, as confirmed by our clerk. I'll back us back up to the standing consent agenda. We'll need a motion to adopt if it is to be adopted. If there's no motion to adopt, how do we proceed? This is a first for me. If there's not a motion to adopt the consent agenda, what happens next, sir?
The consent agenda's been adopted upon adoption of the agenda for tonight, according to the town procedure. You've got the action items and matters placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm just making sure I do it right, because we've always, or I've always asked for a motion to adopt the consent agenda, so.
Sure.
Might have to pardon my ignorance, I thought that would have to happen one way or the other.
You can do, you can do that, and I would recommend you do that. But as far as discussion or removal of those items to an action agenda for discussion, that should have been done earlier on. So I think it's absolutely fine to have that, continue to have those motions to approve the items on the agenda, consent agenda.
And the consent agenda does not just include the minutes from special meetings June 19, 24, and June 11, 24. Items C through F have other items on there, and Matt, maybe you can help. Without an adoption of this, we have, we don't have issue or do have issue with carrying through with authorized purchases and so forth.
So this is a board concern, and I think the interim attorney has identified your procedures. Historically, you have, every time you've come to consent agenda, since I've been here for five years, you've made a motion and approved it. So with all due respect, I don't think I can speak to that, which is why you have legal counsel here. I will yield to what the board chooses to do, and we will try to do business as normal. That's a tough call for me.
Okay.
I believe Commissioner Sanders just had it documented, when she wanted to have documented, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, excuse me. Commissioner Sawyer has a motion on the floor to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's carried by a three-two vote. Thank you all. All right, item number 12 will be, in regards to UDO, sidewalk dining, proposed ordinance. So before we open the public hearing, planner Chris Seberg will give us an update, and we'll have a question, or opportunity to ask him any questions before we go into public here.
Thank you, Mayor. So what you have before you is the same information provided last month. You've got a proposed ordinance that includes changes to chapter 12, to chapter six and chapter 10 of Emerald Isle Unified Development Ordinance. This started with action by this board on April 9th, approving town's request to start work on this regulation. We put things together and went through a few planning board meetings to get their recommendation for you guys to consider. So it does include items such as, we've got public safety involved on the review process, there's liability insurance requirements, and this is just pertaining to restaurants that look to expand their seating capacity in the right-of-way of North County Department Transportation Road, such as 58. Other items is, there's restrictions on ensuring that there's walkable path preserved on our sidewalks, so they cannot block the entire access through there. There's restrictions on tents, there's restrictions on operating hours, you have requirements that they remove the items that are in the right-of-way at the end of, close of business. There's revocation clauses in our code, there's enforcement clauses in our codes, and we are also preserving, if the restaurant is on a corner lot of two roads, we're requiring that a 70-10 site triangle is preserved, so traffic is not impeded by this new use. And then finally, the permit is not transferable, so if a restaurant has a current permit for the sidewalk dining, if you guys approve this, and the restaurant's sold, whoever buys the restaurant would have to reapply and start from scratch. So you've got those items. Under suggestion motion, you can approve these changes as presented, and you've got a consistency statement plugged into that resolution. You can instruct staff to take recommended changes back to the planning board and rework it, if you guys would like. And then, of course, if there is no desire to move forward with this, motion for denial. You also have copies of the general statutes that are specific to this type of use, both 136.27.4 and 136.18. You've got a copy of the consistency statement that was adopted by the planning board at their last meeting on this, on May 20th. And that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, sir. Before we open the public hearing portion, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Seberg? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, before the board discusses and goes one way or the other in the middle, we will hear from our public here, so in order to do that, we'll, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Commissioner Sawyer has a motion to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. At this time, anyone that has signed up for the public hearing portion regarding sidewalk dining, you'll be called up to the podium to have your three minutes. If you, just sign up sheet again, we'll get to you, we'll make sure anybody that wants to speak has an opportunity to speak. I will remind everyone that this portion is public hearing, it is pertaining only to the UDO potential changes for sidewalk dining, so comments, concerns on any other matter won't be allowed at this time, this is just for the sidewalk dining, just a courtesy reminder, so. Matt, clerk?
No signups.
All right, no signups. Did we miss anyone, or anyone miss the sign up sheet in regards to sidewalk dining? All right, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Sanderson has the motion to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that public hearing portion being closed, I will open it up to the board for discussion. If there's no discussion, then we can have a motion, one way or the other, but ladies and gentlemen, would like to talk about it first, and floor's yours.
I personally think, you know, Fish Hut and every other restaurant that's got sidewalk dining, I think is great. I mean, good place to gather, I believe everybody loves going there. I don't think we should stop it, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If there's anything to say, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed text changes to chapter two, six, and 10 of the Emerald Isle UDO as drafted by staff recommended by the planning board. The motion also includes the approval of the consistent statement for change drafted by staff.
All right, Commissioner Sawyer has the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, no opposed? All right, that motion's carried five of, thank you. All right, Mr. Zapp, UJAX access walkway bids, all in.
Yeah, thank you. As we get into item number 13, I wanted to take an opportunity and give you some facts that, some figures. So when Joe was kind enough to present how Public Works and Parks and Recreation joined forces for the Emerald Isle Woods, three walkway bridge repairs, we had, Laura and I had written a grant for $150,000 in regard to making those repairs, that was part of our grant process. By doing that in-house, it cost right at $60,000, which saved $90,000 by doing it in-house, and that $90,000 was reallocated by this board to help offset the cost of the new gym floor. So again, there weren't, those weren't tax dollars, actually, neither was the Doe Drive Underground, any of the three-phase work. So everything at the last 25% of Joe's presentation, all the extra work that he's doing and his team, is 100% grant funded. And so by leveraging that in-house staff that you had referenced, our team was able to tackle that project and then re-divert those dollars and cents. And through that process, we learned a great amount. And I say all of that to say this when we get to beach access walkway bids. Prior to her appointment on this board, when she was staff member, Commissioner Sanderson and I were working on putting this grant application together, and we had gone from an approximate cost of $30,000 per public access walkway, post-COVID, drove those costs to $82,500 per unit, which was a factor of almost three times. So we wrote a grant for $825,000, and we had won that grant, we were awarded. So it allowed us to potentially do up to 10 walkways. So moving forward, thankfully, material prices, which were offset by gold prices in 2021, came back down to a more normalized situation. And we went out and used local engineering firms to do a structural analysis, and we started with a redesign of the walkways to make them six-foot. started with a redesign of the walkways to make them six foot wide. Our intent was to utilize materials that would last longer in our harsh environments, and we landed on what's called SureStep, and it's a six-foot wide, one-foot deep piece of composite material. So we rebuilt walkways, and we were designing them, and we did a beta test with the Howe Street access. When we bid Howe Street, it came in rated $29,900 and some change. So we did that one for $30,000, which gave us an idea of where we were in the market. We went back to FEMA and asked if we came in under, could we do more than the original 10? And the answer was yes. So we looked at the 11th, the 12th, and the 13th, and we bundled those all up. We did a design, and we went to the market. Those numbers came in, the lowest and best bidder came in at 1.135 million and went up to 1.5 million plus or minus. And we said, well, we know those numbers are wrong because we just built one for $30,000. So we went back, split the bid out in parts. We developed with our team a comprehen- a very comprehensive spreadsheet showing every nut, bolt, lag, piece of wood, everything. We bid materials, and we bid labor. And when we split it, the labor bids came in, lowest and best was just north of 360,000, but went as high as 998,000. So we went to market for the bid of materials, and the materials came in, some below 250,000 and some above 250. I'm going to put you on the spot. So Ms. Rosford, will you tell us what happens when materials come in over 250? What did it trigger?
It's a much, a sealed bid process. It's a much more detailed process for our bidding and procurement process, so we have to do extra steps, so.
So we went out to bid.
We always like it to be smaller if we can, because it is a little bit easier.
So as our numbers came back in, we knew where we were. Some of those numbers came in over 250 and some were under 250. And so to be as proactive as we are as staff, to make sure we stay out of hot water and follow all the federal guidelines, we had to re-advertise, and we advertised for sealed bids that were opened this morning at 11 o'clock a.m. And two local vendors supplied those bids, which is too sufficient when it comes to materials. So we opened those this morning at 11:00. I'm telling you the whole iteration, because we were able to save over a half a million dollars, and now I think we'll be able to have 14 total walkways replaced because we did one with a full donation at Howe. Now we're up to 13 more. So what we're asking you tonight is we sent an email out, my office sent an email out to you at 11:41. You should have that email in front of you. And there is a request tonight for two motions, and the first is to discuss the opportunity for awarding the labor portion of the contract, and then the second is a motion in regard to materials. And what we have also done is we went direct to source, and we're trying to see if we can have an actual truck, an entire truck shipped in of just the sure decking, sure step. If we cannot, we already have the lowest and best bidder locally that we would exercise. So the way that these are all worded are to maximize the amount of time, material, least amount of disruption to the community, and get up to 14 walkways constructed. And I want to stress the importance to the community that's with us here tonight and online, that contractually, there's a 200-day window for this work to occur, not before September 9, which is after the holiday, and should conclude before Easter 2025. So with all that being said, I'll answer any questions that you have gladly, and this is a heavy lift between finance, admin, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation. And we want to thank Jen, who was with us, helping us build spreadsheets. I mean, we physically counted every nut and bolt to maximize this grant to get as many as we could done, because we know that we have not been able to maintain these walkways, which used to be budgeted at $90,000 a year, and that has not occurred since 2019. So we're very thankful for it. So I apologize for the length, but I wanted you to have that granular detail, answer any questions that you do have. And we have motions here in your pack and under 13A, as well as the email that was sent to you this morning around 11:45.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Board have any questions for Matt?
Matt, do we have to take bids for the building materials we want to choose somewhere else, or?
We did that today. That's what.
I mean, do we have to publicly go for bids on that?
So we did it, and then the numbers came in over 250. So then we had to go back again and do it in a sealed bid process. We, we hit everyone local. They sent us numbers, and that triggered, the numbers triggered the sealed bid, which is why today at 11:00.
That was on the building materials?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we did a comprehensive bid two times on labor. We had it bundled one time. It came in at almost a million and a half dollars. We split it apart, and now your lowest and best, I think, is your recommendation for tonight, is to contract with Primus Structures of Newport at a cost of approximately 362,000. But we say that's approximate because there are going to be unintended adjustments if we shorten or lengthen a walkway or make any field adjustments that are needed.
Thank you.
What are the odds of getting all these done in that 200-day window?
The odds are very high, because we can tear down and reconstruct a walkway in 14 days. We accounted for holidays. We accounted for bad weather days. We allowed the contractors to have 30 days per walkway, and we have a definitive plan to start with the shortest at Janelle, which is a 25-foot walkway. And then we have plans to do two at a time, to not disrupt more than a specific area. And just, these are funny things. I'm not trying to make light of it, but we're requesting that they were mandated to have a porta potty on site so that there's no issues in the off-season. So we're very comfortable with the approach. Again, this was a full-team effort, because we didn't want to have six units out at any particular time. And then we're also instructing them that they can't work between Christmas and New Year's, because we know we have so many people come back. So our goal would be to have them buttoned up before Christmas and then start again immediately after the first of the year. So that's our plan of attack, but with anything in construction, you know that you might start with painting, and the next thing you know, you're rebuilding the whole kitchen. So yes, a dear, we will do our very best, but there are liquidated damages if they exceed the contractual time period.
Matt, there's, there's been questions recently in reference to handicap accessibility on these public walkways. Can you explain that the beach profile in the town of Emerald Isle does not always permit that? With all the environmental permits that are required?
Yes, we've met with KAMA multiple times at each of these sites, and we have an standardized exemption that, if I'm not mistaken, was established when Frank Rush was manager and Ryan Davenport was our field rep with KAMA, and they worked really hard on it. And so we do have exemptions in position. We will be pulling one KAMA permit for the Seacrest Interior Walkway, which is 365 feet plus or minus. So there's a lot of factors there. Our goal obviously always would be have a tapered slope, one foot, one inch per foot, which is your standard code, not to exceed 30 feet to have the landing. But unfortunately, with our dune topography, we were running into that issue at Black Skimmer when Commissioner Bronlow and I were in the field trying to establish that relationship. But we will make them as flat as possible, with the least amount of steps as possible. But not to make it too elementary, if we could have done it before, we probably would have. So what you do have today is going to be very similar to a remove and rebuild, because we're being compliant with KAMA, we're compliant with the North Carolina Building Code, and then we also want to have the most beautiful piece of infrastructure available to us, which means marine-grade posts that are going to be ground contact, composite handrails, and the sure step, all 2,300-plus feet, 2,400 feet that will be installed. So again, we're going to try to make it as flat as possible, as safe as possible. But again, ADA compliance is in currently at Randy's Way, which is a tremendous build. The Western Ocean Regional Access and Eastern Ocean Regional Access, all three of those are fully, truly ADA compliant, with adequate parking and hard surfaces leaving to each walkway.
Matt, I have two questions. The first one, with the rebuilds, do you see any opportunities with golf cart parking being increased in any of these with a chance of maybe squeezing another spot here and there?
Sure. Statistically, in 2019, we had, I think, 61 parking spaces, and as of this past week, we had 165. And I thank our community resource officer, Beer, for counting those, and Public Works and I, and Fire and EMS, we all met this week. I think we may be able to increase it by two, which will take it to 167 total. So in the last 48 months, we've increased over 100-plus parking spaces, which is good. Specific to this project, I'm going to answer you very selectively on purpose, because I want to make sure we're FEMA compliant. This, this job is for construction-only related to access, where our golf cart parking permits come into play, and there's a definitive, there's been a long-term plan of that the money that's generated from those fees are combined with this construction project. So yes, sir, the goal for the Golf Cart Advisory Committee, Chief Panzerell and their team, is to determine safe locations to expand that. So absolutely. But those are two different pots of money, but we definitely don't want to get in trouble. So we, the answer, the short answer is yes. And we already have, in this budget, allocated a $25,000 earmark for the Golf Cart Advisory Committee to advise us as to the best locations to expand.
And just the second thing that I noticed when Florence was up and we were reconstructing a few of our walkways along the way, just as a, it's just something I noticed, is as the building's going up, some of the contractors back then didn't properly secure the walkways, and as our terrorists came down, they decided they wanted to try to walk in the, walk down an unsecured walkway. So just maybe stretch to them a little bit stronger to make sure that they block off that with the proper wood and stuff at the end, because I saw quite a few places that were reopened up so they could access the beach, because they didn't want to walk, you know, 40 or 50 feet to the next access. Just to, just to highlight what I saw.
I'm so glad you brought that up. That's actually one of the stipulations contractually for Primus Construction, and we met with them, and we, this is a real-life example. So what you brought up is really apropos. We had a contractor, it may have been actually at Howe or Jolene, one of the two, they blocked it at Ocean. They physically put the, what happened is a woman walked out to the beach. They blocked it. They were working away, and they were making their way to the end to put the signage at the beach, and she was coming back already. And so when she called, she said, well, I walked out there at 8:05, and at 9:10, I couldn't come back. And so what we told our contractors, we said, this is a real-life issue. It's very important. You've got high usage. You have to block it simultaneously, and that's for safety purposes. And we're, we're trying to go above and beyond and think through all those things. So I'm really glad you brought that up, and I don't know if you were flying the wall, but that we, we had that in our pre-con, pre-award meeting. So if anybody sees where that's not occurring in the field, just please let us know. Our staff's going to work extremely close. We have an in-house project manager that will be assigned to this construction project and working with the contractors on all 13. That's a great point. Safety first.
Thank you. All right. Unless there's any other discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Before we go on that, bringing up what Commissioner Sanderson was talking about, the ADA accessibility. Matt, you know, we have Bugg Banks being a long-term beach, nursery beach, and I've seen other municipalities, when I was with coastal management, get special recognition when they had also, you know, big beach, nursery beach of, or good plans, management plans. And I think we might be a good candidate to get a variance if we were to apply for my permit, probably get denied for ADA ramp at maybe one or two select locations other than the regional. And I, I think we'd be pretty good candidates for a CRC variance.
That'd be tremendous.
We might want to look at that. I'll work with you on that.
Absolutely. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other discussion or questions for Matt? I'll ask for a motion on 13A.
Yep. I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Primus Structures for the demolition and reconstruction of 13 public beach access walkways at a cost of approximately $362,000.
Commissioner Wooton has the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, carried. Thank you. Item 13B, the material awards. Any discussion, or we can go straight to a motion? That's up to you, ladies and gentlemen.
Straight to a motion? I'd like to make a motion to authorize town manager to negotiate with vendors to be named after bids are open for the purchase of materials needed to reconstruct the 13 beach access walkways at the cost of approximately $300,000.
If you will, I appreciate that. We sent out an update. The reason is, we've had to split them out, and thank you for that. I don't mean to redirect. If it's okay, Commissioner, you'll, if you go to the email, the highlighted two points would be authorizing us to now use Lowe's, because that came in at the lowest, and then the second is the sure step decking, or the local manufacturer, if we can't get sure step to sell to us direct. So on the email would be those two, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion, town staff requests authorization to purchase building materials from Lowe's Home Improvement to reconstruct up to 13 beach access walkways.
All right. Commissioner.
And sure step for the local representative.
And sure step for the local representative.
You can do two separate, if that's okay.
Two separate motions.
Yes, sir.
So first motion's on the floor.
First motion on the floor for sure step.
For town to request authorization to purchase building materials from Lowe's Home Improvement to reconstruct 13 public beach access walkways.
All right. First one is on the floor from Commissioner Sawyer. Read Lowe's. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried.
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to request authority purchasers that decking from the main factor, and if not the local supplier, be used at a cost of $77,400.
Commissioner Sanderson has a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Thank you.
And I apologize for the complexities, but I think what you just did saved us a strong half a million, so thank you.
Great work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Item number 14, unless I'm skipping ahead here. Matt, going to speak regarding the engineering contract for services related to Lands End Dune Infiltration Project.
Yes, sir. The Lands End Dune Infiltration Project is an opportunity for us to deal with storm water in the 330-plus-or-minus homes that serve and reside in Lands End. Currently, that water is pumped by a forced main pump into Emerald Isle Woods, and on annual basis, it can be between 250 and 275 million gallons of water a year. And so we have worked intimately with the HOA board and what they refer to as their ponds committee in Lands End to design a dune infiltration system that has had its immediate design completed and turned in, and we're working through the process now to send an additional KAMA application and further design. And what our recommendation is tonight is for the board to consider to move forward in that next phase, which is 100% granted, and ask Summit Engineering Services to continue with that project in an amount of approximately $93,856 to finalize the designs, and then take us to bid to see if we can award the project and assist in defeating that storm water and making improvements in Lands End.
Any questions for Matt regarding item 14? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Motion, make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute an agreement with Summit Engineering's for system evaluation, develop construction, doc, bid, construction services for Lands End infiltration system.
Commissioner Sanderson has the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right. Item number 15, employee birthdays. Eight hours of PTO for full-time employees. Commissioner Taylor, the floor is yours.
I'll leave them up. All right. So first off, let me speak to the crowd in general here. And the way this came about was, and I didn't mean to upset anybody, and I apologize if you're upset about what I was trying to do here, but our town staff is what we all enjoy every day and what makes this island what it is, the bottom line. They, they work hard and very hard for us, and when we talked about the COVA, or COVA, let me get the right words here right, we were at 3%, and the national average was at 3.8%. So luckily, the board agreed to raise it up to 4%, which took us up to 0.2% above the national average, which I truly believe they deserve, and I still believe that today. I came about this idea, and it was my idea, so you're asking where it came from. It was from me, 100% from me. Wasn't trying to be sneaky, wasn't trying to throw anything out. The main thing is I'm just, I was just trying to, as a board up here, trying to recognize these people that work hard for us while we're, a lot of us are retired now, and they do a lot above and beyond. Like Joe's people, for example, he hires the right people. They go out and they save us tax money by building bridges and doing other sort of things like that. Parks and stuff, you ride your bike early in the morning, they come out, they're picking up trash. They could easily ride by a piece of track and look the other way, but when they clear it, they're done the whole way. They just do above and beyond what I see them do all the time. So I was trying to figure out a way that we could give them a little gift in the sense, and it was a birthday gift is the way I was looking at it. And I, and I could be totally wrong, and I'll let this board make the decision on that if I was. Could just give something back to them, just a little appreciation, thank you. It's, I didn't look at it as a raise or a bonus or anything else like that. It was just letting them have their birthday off. There, so that's, that's kind of where it came about. There, so that's, that's kind of where it came about. I don't personally believe, other than being short-staffed for a day, that, that we're going to be jeopardizing our bankruptcy or costing the town more money. They're just going to be short-staffed, one person on Joe's team when it's his birthday that day, or Candace's team, or vice versa. But the same sense, it's going to be spread all the way across all our full-time employees. So, the other person would back it up the next day. And when their birthday comes apart, you just pick up the load that the other person did. That was where it came from. I wasn't trying, and like I said, and I didn't, I didn't think to be sneaky or anything else. I was just trying, honestly, just trying to tell this town staff and the employees, the firemen, the EMS, the public works, the parks and rec, that we as a board appreciate what they do, appreciate them choosing Emerald Isle because every day, there's another town out there that recognizes the people that we have, and they're going to try to get them from us. And they do it all the time. And then we have to get a new person, has to be trained, and we hope that we get as good as the last person we have. We're, we're not, we're not the stepping stone. We're the place where everybody wants to come and work at. And we got to keep that. So, we got to stand above and beyond the local towns and be stronger with the way it is. That's honestly all, all I was trying to do. And, and that's where I'm at on it. And just to give you the sense of where I'm at and just trying to be straight up with you in the way it is, and I'm, and I'm a straight-up person. So, I, I won't make the motion, but I will support it if, if another commissioner wants to make the motion to give them their day off. But I, but I personally won't make the motion myself. But if the motion's made up here, I will support that motion. And now you know where, where it came about and what I was trying to personally do. So, if you understand that.
Thank you, sir.
So, that's where I stand now. So, I'll leave it for the board to discuss or make a motion if you'd like to do so. But, and if you do make the motion, like I said, I will support the motion.
Board, the floor is back yours again. Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
I was, I know we had some opposition for it. As someone with over 30 employees, I can tell you appreciation goes just as far as money. Showing my employees they're appreciated by giving them a gift is just as important to them as giving them a pay increase. I can see where people would think it would cost the town money. From my point of view, I look at it as my staff, that day is one person short and everybody else has gotten to cover the slack. I know that a lot of you guys that got up and spoke think that this was thrown on you. So, I say we table it. I say we make it a conversation and see if maybe next meeting, we can get some people in here in support of it. And then we can have a conversation about it. I support it. I think it's a great idea. And my experience, since COVID, employee retention is huge. Every corporation, company, business out there is trying to snag your employees as fast as they can. So, if you've got good ones, you better find a way to hold on to them. I think we've got some good ones. I think this would show them that, hey, we really appreciate you. Yeah. If Joe's got somebody on his staff that day that's got a birthday, those guys are going to cover the slack because they know on their birthday, all their coworkers are going to cover their slack. So, I do believe it's a great idea and I do support it. But again, we work for the community. Community's got up here and spoken tonight. So, I say we table it and have the conversation next meeting.
We would need a motion to table that if that's the.
I like. Yeah, we'll let others speak.
Yeah, let me stop any other commissioners that want to talk about it.
I would just, I'd like to add, first of all, I'm a huge fan of the town staff and we saw a lot tonight of the wonderful things that they do all the time. And I think it's great to make this a great place to work and have that kind of esprit de corps where people want to work here and they want to be part of a winning team. I think, and Josh said it, that recognition often goes a long, a long way and even further sometimes than money. So, I think what we probably ought to do is have a conversation about appreciation and how do we express that, whether it's monetary or otherwise. But I think a monetary thing like this, you know, we did just pass the budget last month. So, I would think we'd bring something up like this as part of the regular budget cycle. But I think it, it prompts a great discussion around recognition and appreciation and all those great things and what are the different ways that we can do it. There's a lot of ways besides money to show appreciation and recognition. And I think our staff is certainly worth putting that effort for. But I don't, I don't support this particularly, but I like the idea of coming up with ways and creative ways that we can recognize and appreciate our staff.
Thank you. If y'all would, I'm, I'm sorry, I know it's minor, but it's, it's distracting there. With, let's, let's, I wouldn't have anybody interrupting you guys when you're speaking. If y'all would just let everybody up here talk and let's, let's run an orderly meeting. I'm not calling anybody out in particular, but I can hear it, I know they can hear it. It's important. Every item on the agenda's important. So, let's, let's, let's run the meeting like we always do, nice and smooth and respectful. Thank you. It was, yes.
Matt, can you tell me, as we've discussed, we're not actually bringing on additional personnel to cover this? Tell me what the cost would be and how this would affect our budget.
So, I'll, I'll speak to it. Laura could speak to it.
Either, I don't care.
But I'll, I'll go first. My opinion is, if we have 72 FTEs, we've already budgeted for those people to be here. A 40-hour workweek employee is 2,080 hours. We only get, we, not only, we are very fortunate, we get 11 governmental holidays. We don't get more than 11, so we follow the state plan. So, we do receive those 11 governmental holidays annually. And so, if you added eight hours of PTO, it just adds eight hours of that PTO. So, if the employee's birthday fell on a Saturday, that's why it's worded that they could take it on a Friday or a Monday, there would be a, a zero cost, in my opinion, to the budget. Now, that could be up for debate for others, but is there going to be a cost to this? Because if you already budgeted $50,000 for Officer X and they get eight hours off, they're, they're not going to get paid more. And if I'm mistaken, I'll, I'll yield to Laura.
Yeah, as long as we have scheduling, I think, you know, if, if we were to have to bring people in, then there might be another cost. But, so, it's hard to give you a firm answer. I apologize, I don't have a number calculated, but it would be, you know, potentially an eight-hour day for a, a non, like a, not a fireman or a police officer. Theirs would be a little bit longer because their, their shift is a little bit longer. But, so I probably have a fuzzy answer for you on that. You know, I don't have a firm dollar amount, but we could.
That's fine.
Yep. Yep.
On that point, to be clear, it's not a day off. Police officers are 12-hour shifts. Firefighters are 48. So, you're, you're only discussing an eight-hour allocation. So, it's, it's a, it's a clean line for admin and 40-hour workweek people, and it's eight hours into their bank for whether you're on an adjusted schedule, Fire, EMS, those types of stuff.
If someone doesn't take their birthday off, does that time accrue toward retirement?
So, now you're going to get into the whole vacation conversation. So, the goal, what we do, and I don't know in other organizations what they do, but we're not land banking our time. So, that we do have a policy, if you don't burn all your vacation, how much you can use, you can only carry forward a certain dollar amount, a certain hour amount. So, I think the intent here, if I'm hearing you, would be for that person at their birthday to be off. Now, if you want us to do it different or not at all, we won't do it. But I don't anticipate that anyone here would hold that extra eight hours. But I know that sick time does roll towards retirement as a member of the local government. So, you can speak to that.
Well, I mean, I was reading, studying up on this and I went through some statistics on this and I was surprised to see that for other places that have it, which locally, I don't know of any other places that do, but, but 59% of employees toes not take their birthday off. They've worked through that. So, I was just wondering if, if they do that, does that accrue toward their retirement? Are they cashed out at the end for that or?
I, I only know of one other organization, just because I have a close family member that works in a neighboring organization. So, they offered birthdays to off. And it was a policy and you had to take it in the pay period, the two-week pay period. If you, you missed out or you didn't schedule it, you lost it. So, that was their policy. So, you know, if this was approved by the board, we could work through a policy of use it or lose it and, and come up with something that was agreeable if, if the board chose to. But I, I did learn of that one and I understand that that was temporary. It wasn't a permanent benefit. They had it for a while and they actually, that organization, no longer has it and they have a different holiday that they gave. So, they moved it from a birthday to an additional holiday. So, and I can tell you who that is if you want, but it's, it's just down the road that way.
Thank you.
I, I agree with Commissioner Sawyer on this, especially since there's so many questions and that the public feels like we tried to surprise them with this, that we tabled this. And there's, I did some homework today on this as well. And there's many templates out there to draft these policies by. There are many other municipalities who also offer this same incentive to their employees, all of which require that it be used within a 12-month period. I know that some people are only familiar with the larger corporations in America who do this, but there are plenty of small businesses as well as municipalities in the state of North Carolina who honor this program as well. I make a motion that we table this until a later date.
All right. Motion is on the floor by Commissioner Sanderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Hey, and I just want to say, thanks, thanks to the public and thanks to the board. This is the, this is a prime example of how this is supposed to work. And this is the way we should act as a board. This is the way we should act as a public. And this is the outcome that should happen. So, thank you for all working together on this. This is the way it's supposed to, this is the way this is all supposed to come together, in my opinion. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Excuse me. Item number 16 is going to be regarding our closed session. Before we go into closed session, contrary to meetings that I've chaired since being here before, normally, we go into closed session at the end of the meeting, discuss what we need to discuss, no matter what it is. We come out of closed session and I tell you that, want to go home, go home. We're not discussing any more business when we come out of closed session. A little bit different tonight, we will go into closed session to discuss legal matters. And then item number 17, we will come out of closed session and consider the appointment of a new town attorney. So, once we go into closed session, you'll be asked to leave the room and leave the lobby because it's a closed session. If you want to hang around outside or in the car, I'll do everything I can to have one of our officers or someone go out and get you when we come out of closed session. If you want to be present for the consideration of the appointment of the new town attorney and comments from everybody to my left and right and myself. So, that being said, I will ask for the motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session to discuss sole attorney without any mitigation as well as to discuss the appointment of a new town attorney.
Okay, the motion is on the floor by Commissioner Sanderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all, and I'll take a peek outside for you when we get down to the closed session and.
I'm with.
Yes.
I'm going to take a bathroom break.
Yeah.
Please.
Five minutes. All right, thank you. We are now out of closed session. Moving on to item number 17, to consider the appointment of a new town attorney. Board, where are we as far as the appointment of a new town attorney? One of you can let us know what's next.
Does there require a motion?
No, we have set a date for Monday.
July 29th.
29.
9:00 AM.
We have picked three attorneys out of the seven to interview at that time and make a decision.
All right. To recap, Monday, July 29th, an interview, special meeting in closed session will be held to interview the top three candidates for appointment for a town attorney. The board is not taking action to appoint a new town attorney tonight. Our interim town attorney will serve at least up until that time. Please correct me if I've missed anything.
That's right.
All right. Town clerk, any comments? Interim town attorney, any comments, sir?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Thayer?
Just to congratulate Lieutenant Ketchum for 20 years of service. That's it.
Very good.